Hey, you were on free trial and now I'm asked to cancel or they're gonna charge me 20 bucks.
Hi, good evening and welcome, everybody. I would like to call to order the Monday, August 14th, 2017, meeting of the Lake County School Board. Let's start off with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you all for joining us tonight and welcome back to everybody. This is our very first
school board meeting of the new school year, so we got off to a great start and I'm sure Superintendent, you'll share some highlights later on tonight, but I think it was a great opening and I'm excited for what the new year will bring. Tonight, we'll take a look at the agenda. First off, any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions?
We have one emergency item to add. The item is to deny employee number 113896 a leave of absence for personal leave.
All right, very good. We've got the one emergency item, which I'll deem an emergency, so we'll address that one after we get to the end of the consent agenda. We also have one public input card specific to one of the items on tonight's agenda. It's 9.03, so we can pull that one for discussion and Ms. Cronin will be able to speak to that one at that time. Board members, did you have any others of interest?
The poll?
Yes.
Yes, 10. 10.01.
10.01. All right. The dress code for Lake Maniola? Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. Right, we also have a couple of minutes to approve.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop dated July 17th, 2017, and the regular school board meeting July 24th, 2017.
All right, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Sandy. You got it. All right. Any questions or comments before voting on those? All right, seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And that one carries 5-0. And we do have one very important item under representation tonight, and that is a resolution.
That is correct. You have a resolution. This was a follow-up from the board meeting, I believe it was two board meetings ago, when Melanie Johnson from Volusia County came and spoke to us about joining alongside them in regards to the DCD. So we have crafted a resolution similar to that of Volusia and other districts that you have before you, calling for the Florida Legislature to amend state law to halt the transfer of education funding from poorer school districts to wealthier school districts under the DCD multiplier within the Florida FEFP program.
All right. Very good. Board members, you have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
All right, there's a motion by Bill.
Second.
Here's the Astic motion and second, a second by Stephanie. There are any questions or comments before we vote on that resolution?
Amen.
Indeed, indeed. All right. But then let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. That carries 5-0. That brings us to, we have one public input card that is not specific to tonight's agenda, so we'll invite Mr. Vance Yoakum down to the floor, down to the front for three minutes.
I think Mount Dora allows five minutes. Probably adopt the Mount Dora rule.
Why don't you drive down and talk in Mount Dora, then?
You can get there in less than two minutes.
Work in a kitchen somewhere.
He has been.
I know. All over the world. Okay. First, I'd like to say thank you to the administrators for adding fiscal impact to the agenda, and I noticed that in the evaluation document that you've got under discussion, section 11, that you've got some other things on there that I think are very helpful, and it even asks the board to do some things, which I think is also very helpful. And so I would say I like that document. Okay, real quickly, I mentioned the earlier meeting about groups that were out there that are reviewing textbooks. I've now found more about one. There's a group in Texas that's well-known. It was called something like Truth in Texas Textbooks, and they have expanded. Now they're called Truth in Textbooks. They have already done California. They've gone through all of them. They're using electronic crowd sourcing information to collect ideas and review textbooks. And it isn't necessarily from a conservative standpoint. It's, it's a, but they're looking for biases. They're looking for maybe an imbalance in religion, but those are not the key topics. They're looking at, and they're researching historical information that's presented in textbooks, social study, world history, and so forth. And they're training right now over 40 people for Florida. They've already done North Carolina also. And so they go through and they put them all together, and then, of course, they publish that list and then start working on the legislators and/or the state education department to review those issues. But they find a lot of issues, and they do have them posted on their website. It's called Truth in Textbooks, I think. And they do have, they're changing websites right now, so I don't know if you can get to it, but they have a lot of reports that they've already done in other states. The, I keep coming back to this idea that if we want to be a destination school district, one of the things that I would recommend is, and I will send you information on attorney that's well-known in conservative circles, her name is, I was gonna say Kellyanne, but that's not it. Now, my mind's gone blank, but she was on C-SPAN for three hours this last two weeks. She's that well-known now in the United States for developing constitutional class curriculums. She teaches it at schools. She's backed up with speaking requests and going to schools, including charter schools, and teaching the U.S. Constitution. And she also has a very good presentation on world history and Europe, leading up to the Magna Carta and then up to the U.S. Constitution. And she's presented that here locally, actually, in a couple of groups. So I will send you information on that, but that's another thing, if you have that. And finally, I just noticed that there's a field trip to Tampa Bay. It's item 10.18. I'm not saying change it, but I just like to point out they're going on a field trip to Tampa Bay. They're paying their own way, a whole, I guess, a busload of 4th and 5th graders to learn the science of baseball. Now, what I wonder is why they can't go to the Leesburg baseball team and learn it there, because there isn't a lot more details. But I just like to point that out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments tonight. We'll move into the reports, portion of our agenda tonight, and the first comes from the Educational Foundation. Do we have a representative here?
Representative.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to Mr. Johnson from the attorney side.
Does he have anything to report?
All right, very good. We don't have any unfinished business tonight, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Superintendent?
Recommend approval of the consent agenda, items 8.01 to 9.02, 9.04, 10.02 to 10.18.
All right, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Sandy. Any questions or comments before voting? And let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, very good. 5-0. I almost forgot to vote there. I got so busy trying to listen to all the other votes. Okay, there we go. All right, so we have a few items to address separately. The first is 9.03. We'll invite Ms. Kim Cronin down to the front now for her portion of public input before we discuss this item.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board members. This was something I was very happy to see on the agenda for tonight. This is something I've been advocating for several years. I did have conversation with the superintendent about it. I think I've spoken to some of you over the years. But we're gonna have over 300 buses that have AC. The buses have at least two units on each bus. Some of them have three units. So you might fix one unit today and tomorrow another unit goes down. You know, this is, when kids get off buses that have no air conditioning, you, if you pick up your child, you see them, they're all sweaty and hot. And this also helps for behavior issues, because if the windows are closed, the students aren't hanging out the windows and they're not throwing things out the windows. So I'm very happy to see this on here, and I hope you approve it tonight. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I recommend that you approve item 9.03, addition revision to the staffing plan for the transportation AC mechanic.
All right. So moved.
A motion by Sandy and a second by Bill. Any questions or comments before voting on this one? All right, very good. Now let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That one carries 5-0 unanimously. We'll have some cool kids. Excellent. 10.01. Kristy, I think this was one that you had asked for to be addressed separately.
Yes. This, this is, I have supported all the other changes, all the other changes that every school is asked to make when they go to uniform policy. This is a change in, that specifically, I feel like targets our girls, in that it doesn't allow them to wear leggings, yoga pants, any of those type of tight items under their skirts or shorts.
Recreational type.
Yes, recreational clothing under their skirts and shorts. And I just feel like, as a mother of two girls that I'm trying to raise to be strong women, that I'm not comfortable with specifically targeting our girls. It's hard enough to be a girl. I want my girls to feel that, that their education is as important. And if they choose to wear, which they do every day, wear leggings under their dresses, that what they're wearing isn't, doesn't have anything to do with, will not interrupt their education. I'm concerned with girls being targeted and having a disciplinary effect when they should be in class because they chose to wear leggings under their skirt. So I just think that this unfairly targets our girls.
I think it should be noted, Chairman, that the SAC committee at Lake Maniola High School, which is a school in my district, and the principal had reached out to me, I won't be wearing leggings either, just so it's not targeted at any one sex. But, but the, the, this was a recommendation that came from their SAC committee, which is made up of parents of that school. And as we've recognized in the past, we voted for changes in the uniform policy, that it really fits the culture of whatever the school and whatever conditions are going on there. So I will be supporting it.
Well, before we jump into too much discussion, I suppose we should bring this to the floor in some sort of motion. But Superintendent, will you put your recommendation out on the table for us?
I recommend that you approve item 10.01, waiver of school board policy 5.37.
All right, so there's a recommendation, a motion from Bill and a second.
A second.
Second by Stephanie. All right, so let's go ahead and continue the discussion on this one.
I just feel like it's, I feel like if they all want to go to uniforms, that's reasonable. But I know many, several girls already in other schools who have had issues with leggings. And frankly, I don't think that, I think we need to be focusing on their education and not their, their, what they're wearing under it. And it's just, it's, it's comfortable. It's, it's stylish right now. I've seen many people wear it. It just seems unnecessary. And I think sex, I don't always, I hope that our SAC committees will grow to be independent, and maybe this is one of those, but I'm not sure that it is. And I don't support directing something that is clearly directed at female attire in changing our policy. Our policy does have something about inappropriate. So if they're like see-through, that would be not acceptable.
Yeah, if I recall, and this was a topic that came up for discussion under the Code of Conduct revisions this year, I believe our policy allows them to wear skin-tight recreational clothing, as long as they're wearing something on top of that that would fulfill the dress code.
Which has been an issue.
So that if, if they're, you know, if, if you remove the leggings, what they're wearing is still within dress code, you know, that, and for me, I'll be honest and tell you, I thought this one seemed a little peculiar at first to me, since what they'd be wearing on top of it would still fulfill the spirit of the dress code. But then, like you, Bill, I said, well, gosh, it went through their SAC and the SAC is looking for this, which then involves the stakeholders from the school, and once again, going back to that unique school culture. And if that's something that the school specifically is requesting, well, who am I to give a cookie cutter approach to the entire district?
I agree. It's the SAC committee thing that I came back to as well.
I understand the SAC committee thing. I just think that this one is, I guess we're the final decision, and this is, I feel like is, personally, I feel like this is misguided. And as for it being more conservative, I think my children are more conservative when they wear leggings under their dresses.
Well, and I think in elementary world, I think that that is the case, because my own children also wear it underneath there. But it's specifically for when they go to the playground, so that they will be covered up. I'm not so sure that that happens at the high school level, on, for the same purposes.
That's right. There is a completely different.
Right. It's a different approach.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges that was mentioned during that Code of Conduct discussion was that it becomes incredibly difficult to enforce that the outermost layer of clothing is meeting the dress code, that people think, well, I've got these leggings over here, so I'll throw on something that
Right.
On top that, just, just for the sake of throwing something on top, but it doesn't meet the dress code. And that becomes more difficult to try to enforce.
We, we can just vote. We don't have to beat a dead horse.
Good idea. All right, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, that's a 4-1 vote on that one. And we have one emergency item to address tonight.
Yes, I recommend approval of emergency item to deny employee number 113896 a leave of absence for personal leave.
All right, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie. Any questions or comments before voting on this one? All right, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. That carries 5-0 unanimously. Bringing us into our discussion portion of the agenda, first one being 11.01, the superintendent evaluation. Mr. Johnson, your name is on this one. Are there any initial comments you would like to make?
Only as to the process that we have, and the clerk of the board will have copies of all original five evaluations, which were all, is usually timely provided to our office so that we can put it together. We took those five evaluations and compiled them into the document that's titled Superintendent Evaluation 2017-2018. That document includes a notation on each different goal and each performance indicator, what the scoring for each individual board members designated by the first letter of their last names. We then took all of the comments from the various individual evaluations and placed them into one comment section at the end of every evaluation section. I realize I talked to Mr. Mathias. We may have a couple of typos, and we'll fix those up before we file this away. If you'll go towards the back of the compiled evaluation, the page with all the numbers on it, what we did in this one was take for each area indicator, take the value that had been assigned by each board member, and essentially put them in this grid, which averages them by each separate area and by each board member. They came out to be four, five area scores or averages that are on the last page before the, or excuse me, the next to last page, that reflect a total overall average by area of 4.313. And on the last page, the average by board members, which shows the individual averages for each board member for all of the five areas and the total, and the overall average, which I was hoping would be pretty close to that other average, because it should be the same number, and it's 4.312. Under the superintendent's contract with the school board, this was the evaluation, it ends the evaluation process for the period from January, I think it was, well, whenever the superintendent's first day of work was, to June 30th of 2017. There'll be a need to move forward to establish the criteria for the next annual evaluation that comes forth. Under the contract, there is a performance bonus of $7,000. It's tied to the evaluation score when it exceeds 4.0.
I'm not sure if, in your, in your typos, you caught this one, but goal number two, item 2.3, there are two Ds listed under the five. I think one of those should have been a B.
Okay. We will go back through time limitations that we had to finish it up, caused us to kind of make sure we stuck it together so we could get it here tonight. We did have until tomorrow to finish it, but we figured it best be, so we could approve it tonight. But we'll fix those before we, because they're all in the five originals.
All right, excellent. Any discussion from the board on this one? Well, I guess you'd need a motion from us to accept this?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, how about a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Sandy, second by, by Kristy. All right, any discussion before we vote on accepting this one into the record?
And I, you, you read a lot.
Just with corrections.
I did. I did read a lot. I tried to provide as much constructive feedback as possible. All right, anything else? All right, very good. Now let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, that one's accepted into the record. Bringing us to 11.02, tentative approval of revisions to policy 4.502, middle school student clubs and organizations.
Everyone, I think, is aware of the continuing, I mean, we're not actually finished in court yet. We're very close. I spent most of today working on getting that over with. But in order to move forward and allow for clubs to be formed in the middle school, we need to adopt a policy that we think is supportable and defensible under what we now know to be the, at least the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals interpretation of clubs. What I provided is essentially the high school policy with one change. This one has a section which indicate that in the middle school level, parents must be provided, or must approve the, any clubs or organizations which their student attends. I was looking for the, here it is, it's number 11 on page two. "All student clubs and organizations shall obtain a consent form from the parents of each participating student on a form provided by the district." This policy has the same as the high school, which we've had for at least a year, maybe two years. Actually, I think it's closer to three years that we've had the high school policy, because it was about the time the lawsuit was filed that we made that change. I mean, it has curricular clubs and organizations. You can still have curricular clubs that do have some differences in how they are dealt with. For example, you can have paid sponsors to assist curricular clubs. Curricular club is a very tight definition. We will read it conservatively, the way the courts have read it, so that there, you will not have a lot of curricular clubs, either at the middle school or the high school level as a general rule. Then it deals with non-curricular clubs and organizations, and essentially cites, recites what the high school policy states, which is that if you have a non-curricular club, you can form that. You're required to file an application. And if, once you have the club formed, you're entitled to all of the same benefits that any other non-curricular club, whether it was a formerly a curricular club that became non-curricular because it didn't meet all the standards for it. An example of that would be some of the service clubs that are sponsored by Kiwanis or clubs of that nature. They used to be identified as curricular clubs. They will not be now, but they will have all the same benefits as all the other non-curricular clubs. And then we make special provision for religious organizations to make sure that the policy states that employees of the school board may not participate. They, they, they can be present only in a non-participatory manner. And then the last is extracurricular activities, interscholastic extracurricular activities, which in Lake County are governed by the Lake County Middle School Athletic Association. Does this policy completely eliminate any possibility that someone will complain about some part or any portion of it? No. I guess the most questions I've had about it, the parental permission. Could someone make an argument that, well, you have parental permission in high school, high schools are secondary schools, so are middle schools, they're secondary schools, so how do you treat high schools differently by having some have parental permission and some not? Yes, you can make an argument, clearly, the court, although was overruled on the application of equal access, the district court federal judge clearly stated that there was, there is a distinction in age difference between middle school and high school, whether they're all secondary, call them secondary schools or not. Is it unreasonable to place in a middle school policy a limitation that for all clubs, that any parents, that we want parents to know what clubs the students are participating in, so we're going to require that parents get consent to participate in any clubs? Is it more conservative to say that, well, if we're gonna have that in middle school, then we have to have it with the high school policy too? Yes, that's more conservative. I mean, that's less, that lowers the possibility of somebody complaining about it, or you get rid of the parental consent in both of them. That's also a, a lower probability of a complaint being filed about that. But, you know, I, I think that having this in here is reasonable for middle school because of the age and the ability to parents to know what their students are participating in. If you'd like to do something differently, we can. The other alternative is to utilize this change in the legislation that was attempted this last time and, and go back to the other policy, but I certainly am not going to recommend that. I don't think the change in the legislation does what we wanted it to do.
All right. And I'm guessing that this one is a public hearing, given it's a policy.
Yes, sir. If, I mean, for whatever, well, I guess you can do that first. You can change the language after you have a discussion. So we'll do that right now, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The matter before the board is tentative approval of revisions to board policy five, excuse me, 4.502, middle school student clubs and organizations. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this particular amendment, please come forward to the microphone at this time. I don't see anyone coming forward. Mr. Chairman, I believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
All right, very good. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend tentative approval of revisions to policy 4.502.
All right, there's a recommendation. Any motions?
So moved.
All right, motion by Stephanie, a second by, by Kristy. Very good. All right, so we've got the floor open for discussion on this one now. Any discussion? Are you all ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
All right, ready to vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, there we go. Demonstrates how effective our previous workshops were and our conversations on this one, that we were ready to go on it. Next one is another policy revision. This one's the final approval of the sale price of meals.
Yes, sir. The next matter is final approval of revisions to school board policy 8.411, sale price of meals. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this policy, then please come forward to the microphone at this time. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone coming forward and believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Very good.
Recommend final approval of revisions to policy 8.411.
All right, there's a recommendation. Any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Stephanie and a second by Bill. Any questions or comments before voting? Yes, go ahead, Sandy.
Mr. Chairman, on page two of four of this document, I think there needs to be some clarification, not change the document, but make sure that all involved are aware. At the bottom of the page, it says, "When the child reaches the account cap, they will only be offered a designated menu alternate." It doesn't actually, you know, the paragraph above says that you're not going to take and label the child by going and putting some stamp or something on them, saying, hey, you know. But I think there needs to be some direction for the cafeteria managers to know how to handle this. They've not been informed exactly how to do this in a way that it's not going to be embarrassing to the student. So I think that just needs to be something handled as well.
Absolutely. We'll take care of that. Make sure that there is a clear understanding.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, now let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That carries unanimously, bringing us to 11.04, final approval of revisions to policy 2.95, wellness program.
Yes, sir. The final, the matter before the board is final approval of school board policy 2.95 wellness program. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this particular matter, please come forward. please come forward to the podium at this time. I don't see anyone coming forward, Mr. Chairman, and believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Recommend final approval of revisions to policy 2.95.
All right, there's a recommendation. Any motions?
Some moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Kristi. Any questions or comments before we vote on this one? All right, and let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Also carries unanimously. And finally, Mr. Johnson, the last item in discussion is yours.
Yes, sir. I took a couple of days off, so we wanted to make sure we got everything on this Monday. This particular one is a lawsuit that was filed by TSA Stores against the school board of Lake County for unpaid invoice. And the unpaid invoice had to do with athletic equipment and uniforms for East Ridge High School. Apparently, there was originally a issue about whether $9,100 of the equipment had been returned, and TSA Stores was willing to give a credit for that if there was some proof that there had been a return of that, UPS slip something. And there never was anything, and that was two years ago, so it was unlikely that it's going to pop up sometime soon. In addition, there were a number of credits that were being claimed by the school district and the school because of some notations on the invoices, such as this was part of a special deal, might take off $500, and an email from an individual that may or may not be connected with these stores anymore because this was really a deal that was between the East Ridge and the Sports Authority, and the Sports Authority went into bankruptcy during this period of time as well. So, the, and I think I put in the memo, the best case without the $9,100 is $31,000. The worst case is we have to pay the entire $45,000 because we can't prove that we're entitled to any of the discounts and we never returned anything. And we do acknowledge that we received all of the equipment and the goods. So, but the difference between 31 and 45, the TSA attorney was willing to settle that for 35, which is a difference, I think, of less than $4,000. You would spend more than that on attorney's fees, and you'd still have some uncertainty as to whether you had to pay the whole $45,000. So, I think they're making a reasonable offer, and it's a settlement that we will confirm that they have the authority with the bankruptcy court to be able to undertake this settlement so we don't have to deal with this again. But my recommendation is that we settle for the $35,000 and get the lawsuit dismissed.
All right. Thank you for that information, Superintendent. Your official recommendation on that one?
Recommend approval of the settlement of the lawsuit with Sports Authority.
Some moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Kristi.
Mr. Chairman, because we're not sure, because we're settling before I give the information, we also want to, understood that the motion has authorized the superintendent and the chairman to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the settlement.
All right, very good. Those of you that made the motion the second, you good with that? All right, very good. All right. Any questions or comments before voting on this one? All right, then let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, also unanimously. Moving to the superintendent's portion of the meeting.
I could talk a lot tonight, but I won't. But I will give a few shout outs and thank yous. First of all, to the area chambers of commerce, who just did an amazing job welcoming back our teachers and staff. We had breakfasts and luncheons going on. They were so well-loved and cared for, and I just appreciate all the efforts of this community and our business supports who took good care of our teachers and staff during those back-to-school events. I also want to give a shout out to our transportation department and our bus drivers. I have never had a smoother opening in regards to transportation. You know, there's always those few minor glitches, but every child got to school safely, they got home safely, some a little later than others, but they all got there. And I just think they did a phenomenal job, and I had very few concerns expressed by parents, and the few that are out there know that we'll get them taken care of and get everybody settled and safely to them from school in the shortest amount of time possible, but I thought that they did an outstanding job, and I appreciate all their efforts. And I also just want to thank all of our teachers and administrators and staff, students and parents. It was, has been a tremendous three days. They've been very smooth. I got to visit, I've been in 11 schools so far in three days, so I was pretty proud of that, that I was able to get in and visit a few classrooms and just talk to some kids, and so it was great. There were lots of high-five lines and opening day cheers, they had boo-hoo breakfasts for parents, lots of great things going on, some creative approaches, and it was all shared on our district Facebook page and social media pages, so thank you, Sherry, for organizing those. And if you haven't checked them out, there's lots of smiles and great things to celebrate on those sites. I will still, probably one of your things that you wanted to highlight, along with Board Member Mathias, the three of us had an opportunity to celebrate the grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony of our Health Science Collegiate Academy. We have 65 juniors who will be on site starting next week at Lake Sumter State College in Claremont, and we got to see their new classroom facilities and all that will be provided to those students. Our goal is to grow that program and opening it up to all high school students so that every child has the opportunity to participate in what is just a fabulous facility with clinicals in partnership with South Lake Hospital. And again, it's just a tribute to this community and its love for children that everyone came together to make this happen, whether it was at the state level or local level, and so we're excited about watching that program grow and all that it will afford kids as they get ready to graduate with possibly an AA degree in health science and grow into a growing field where they are more than likely going to have a great job in the future. So we're excited for them, we got to see them today. And then lastly, we do have, if you haven't heard, there is a total solar eclipse coming up. And so, we did do a press release today, just with preparations and precautions about what we will recommend for that, so I know that that was sent to the board, and parents are getting notifications sent out via Peach Jar and notices going home, and Sherry's been in communication with the principals as well to make sure that everyone enjoys the event very safely. And lastly, I just want to say, I think I said last minute ago, this time I do mean lastly, I want to thank you for your feedback and for the support that you've given to me over my first 100 days. As I reflect upon my evaluation, I'm very appreciative of your support and all of your encouragement during this time. And I left you a gift at your seat. It's one of my very favorite books. It's called A Fine, Fine School, and I think as you read it, you'll understand the irony of the book. So I'm not going to spoil it, but I asked you to read it, and I think that you'll enjoy the outcome of the story. But I did sign a little note in there that says that while the title's A Fine, Fine School, I said that Lake County Schools is a great, great school district, and I just appreciate what you do for our kids and schools and for me personally and professionally, so thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Do you have any letters of condolence to report tonight?
I do. We had one that we just sent out today to Mr. and Mrs. Frisbee. They're both teachers here, and the loss of their son very tragically this weekend, so condolences to them.
Thank you. We'll keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Sandy?
All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to back up with what Superintendent Carnegie made, a comment about the Taverri's Chamber of Commerce. It was a great luncheon. Our teachers and staff thoroughly enjoyed it, and they said they had never been treated that nicely before in that way as Taverri's teachers, so I want to make sure the chamber is aware of that. The first day of school, as she said, went well. I actually got to see my granddaughter's first day of kindergarten. I went to somebody else's district, though, and saw her there, but I stayed on my side of the campus, she stayed on hers. But, but it was wonderful, and I think it went off without a hitch, and, but I did see some, some kids that were a little bit upset that they're being separated, but the boo-boo breakfast made a lot of good for the parents. Just want to say something real quick on the Cypress Ridge cafeteria deal. Anybody that's never been down there, you should go see that before it's demolished.
Yes, you should.
And realize, this is something that we don't want to have in the future in our, in our district for our kids to eat out of or our staff to work in. Also, this morning, actually, it happened Friday, if I'm not mistaken, the power went out at Mount Door High School, and we had other issues there at the middle school as well. And this morning, I understand they started arriving at campus, and about 5:15, I understand, the first calls started going out to Pete Miles and Tony Crank and to whoever else would pick up the phone, telling them they had no AC. And maintenance responded quickly and swiftly, and they were able to get the AC back up and going pretty close by nine o'clock. There was one building that was still a little high temp, but it's understandable whenever you're trying to pull it all at one time. So hats off to maintenance for that. Been speaking with Mr. Farnsworth about the gate receipts entry costs for our sporting events, and he's been working on that, and he presented back to me a very, I want to say outstanding, presentation back, but the only thing that was lacking on there, and I asked him to check, and he will, I know, is the middle school and elementary kids, how do we take care of them as far as gate receipts, as far as charge? And so, because we want our children to be, you know, to participate as much as possible, but we'll, we'll see what happens from it. Also, this year, our cafeteria managers were able to be, the first day of school, with their staff at campus, at a breakfast or luncheon, whatever they had, and they really enjoyed it because they were able to see other staff members and new teachers that they needed to be able to see. And I understand even one of our cafeteria managers up in the Umatilla area actually won a door prize, and she was ecstatic, so, but that was great, and that's all because of the superintendent asked that that be done. And lastly, about the evaluation, Superintendent, as you, you know, I think you've done an outstanding job, and even today, in a meeting that I was at before I came here, some of the, one of, he's a mayor in one of our cities, and then some of the other individuals there throughout the community and other city representatives said, this superintendent has reached out to the community and to the business leaders, and has reached out to council members, mayors and all, and we appreciate that. And to me, that, as I said before, that's accolades, that we have gotten out there for the PR for that. And so, we appreciate that, but they also appreciate that you are involving them. So, thank you.
Kristi?
I think a lot of us are going to be competing for which chamber of commerce was awesomest. I'm going to make that word up right now, but I wanted to do a huge shout out to the Leesburg area Chamber of Commerce for an amazing breakfast that they put together for all of the teachers of Leesburg area. It was huge at Lake Sumter. There was penguins, every school brought it, brought basically their mascot or their, and just, some of them had dances and songs, it was so much fun. There was inspirational, inspirational video that Lake Sumter TV did. The outpouring from the community was, was just wonderful. It was wonderful to see, and I know that our teachers appreciate it because they tell me about it late in this school year, so I'm just very grateful, and I wanted to say thank you to the Leesburg area Chamber of Commerce so much. I also did see Sandy at Treadway Elementary, where I wanted to do a shout out for Rita Morgan, who is actually new to Treadway, and brought the new high-five line to Treadway Elementary, which was really sweet because there was elected officials and community members and police officers, which, let's face it, they're cooler than we are, who all gave kids high fives as they came in the door. So, it was, it was a really, that was a nice event to, to go to, and then there was the boo-hoo breakfast afterwards. And just to the board, I do have a name for the water, the water safety advisory committee did, was there any others? Do I need to name?
Mine didn't pan out.
I had, yes.
Stephanie will be relieved to.
Good. Okay, so I have a name. Do you, do I announce it? The person? Oh, Jamie, I'll have to tell her, she got it, Jamie Gilmore Armitage, which I think you know her.
Yeah.
Yeah, didn't, we both had swim lessons.
Yeah.
Yeah, our kids had swim lessons with her.
I'm wanting to think of her two years ago.
I don't know.
She said she was really interested, so I'll let her know. She won.
I had to be on the committee as a board member, so she'd have been on the hook two years ago.
Excellent, great appointment.
I'm done.
All right.
So I judge the opening of a school year, this is my fourth now, by the number of emails I get. And this year, nada, not one. That's absolutely incredible. But I don't want to speak about all of the great chambers because they did all a phenomenal job. I was able to watch them and sponsor some, and so I was very proud to be part of it in that way. I want to speak about just the spirit of Lake County, and Superintendent, you carry it, but also the other day, there was a story where one of our charter school principals picked up a young man on the road, and through the conversation of taking him to work, realized that he was walking, at that time, eight miles, turned out to be 17 miles a day to go to work. And so Wes Locke deserves a huge shout out because he did a GoFundMe, and it was Give Mike a Bike. And I think in about four and a half hours, he had a, he had reached the goal of a bike, and then it gave, it went to Give Mike a Car. And then it passed that, and, and the last update that I received from Wes was that, that they were moving him closer into town, and he was able to get a scooter, and really, but that was all from the leadership of one of our administrators, that, that quietly, well, actually, it was quiet that he picked him up, it was pretty loud afterwards that he reacted, and the community was drawn to that message, and that emphasizes how important that leader is of the school, because they command so much power for, for good and change. So that's all I wanted to talk about.
All right, great story. Thanks for sharing. Stephanie?
I also had the chamber breakfast, and I wasn't even going to mention it, but I think every one of us enjoys that opportunity of telling them thank you, because our teachers are hugely appreciative, and I have heard from more teachers about the chamber breakfast than any issues of the opening days of school, so that does say a lot for our community partners. I also wanted to thank the Youth of Service League for hosting the reception for the new principal at Youth of Small School, Mr. Miller. They said they had a good turnout, and it was a nice reception and welcome, and he has started off the year well as well. I also wanted to ask the team and lead evaluation updates. I know we've spoke before as a board about liking to know those changes in advance so that when we get calls and questions about them, we know what's coming up. And I know you have reduced the number of indicators since over, but if you guys are planning to bring that to us at some point, that would be awesome. And then I also put on here, the new multi-tiered system would be a good review, to know how that's changed as well. I will say, my last, my last comment about how smooth the opening of school, school has been is I think the car rider line was like 30 minutes less today, so they're really doing a good job kicking them in and out from the first day to the, to the first day of the new week, so, thank you.
Very good. Well, of course, that rain probably didn't help during dismissal time on, oh, man, it just poured in the south end of the county on the first day of school, right at dismissal, and these, these teachers are just dripping wet, and boy, it shows you the dedication they've got to make sure these kids still get loaded safely into, into their cars. Like all of you, I will echo the, and applaud the chambers for the work that they've done to recognize and welcome our teachers back. What is so exciting is that for the last three years, I've bragged about how great the South Lake Chamber is, and to be able to sit here and to be able to hear so many other school board members brag about how great their chambers are in their district, it really shows you the, the spirit of the entire county, and it's just fantastic to see so many chambers step it up and deliver this, this great impactful welcome back. The south end, we split into two days this year. Elementary had their own day, and middle and high school had a second day. I don't know, looking at that room being packed on both days, I don't know how they could have possibly ever fit in the same room, and it's shocking that we, we used to do it that way. Some of the highlights of that were the, probably the $40,000 in prizes they gave away over the course of two days. Teachers were overly thrilled, and I think the other big highlight, and I wish you all were to hear this, you know, the crowd reaction when our superintendent and Dr. Weiskopf had announced the no new initiatives this year, that instead, we were simplifying, clarifying, and prioritizing, and, boy, let me tell you how well that went over, they were thrilled. That was like the best prize of the day. You can't put a dollar value on that, to think about not being inundated with all these new programs and initiatives, rather just being able to focus on the basics. I think one of the most exciting things for me about the first day, you know, because this county is so big, it's, it's hard to see it all. So, Sherry, thank you for the work that you did with the, with social media and being able to follow that hashtag and watch all these smiling faces all over the county report back to school. I know that those smiles were a direct result of the work that, that our faculty and staff went in to create a, you know, the excitement of going back to school, whether it's the bus driver, or the cafeteria worker, or the teacher, or the principal, or community leaders standing out front. It truly is a team effort to create that kind of excitement, you know, because I think as, as you start to count down the days of summer, some of the kids are dreading the idea of that summer is ending, but to have such a warm reception back really shows you the, the that summer is ending, but to have such a warm reception back really shows you the energy that our folks have. Speaking of energy, there is, I'll piggyback on your remarks about the Health Sciences Collegiate Academy this morning. We had an opportunity to go through and tour some of the classrooms and meet some of the faculty. And I can't even tell you how incredible it would be if we could bottle some of the enthusiasm from these teachers. They were really thrilled about the idea of these students coming and being pioneers in this program, being able to step up to the level of rigor and compete at that level. It was almost contagious, you know, to talk and interact with some of these professors, some of these instructors, and as they would talk about the labs that they're planning on doing this year. What a worthwhile experience for these kids. This is going to be so valuable to them. I spent a lot of time talking with the students this morning and finding out what helped them prepare for this program, what they're going to be doing afterwards, what could we do as a school district to help them become more prepared? And the common theme I heard from all the students is that they're really looking for some acceleration, and they're not the only ones, that there are other people joining them at school, their friends, who are also looking for acceleration opportunities and are not specific to the health sciences. And that's where some of these students are really excited about the capstone that we're putting into place. But I'll confess and be honest, that I heard a lot of students mention IB specifically by name, and a lot of these students had mentioned that they had friends who sought opportunities in private school just to be able to get that. That's something that we're missing, and I know that we've got a lot of work to do in the college acceleration, and I'll throw a challenge out there as well, and that's also to start thinking about middle school acceleration. As I talked to some of these kids, and I know the numbers are, they've lost some students along the way because this program is just so tough. I said, well, why are your classmates not there anymore? And they said, well, it is really hard, and I'm not sure that we felt adequately prepared coming in, that in middle school, we took honors classes and they were just a breeze.